Second opinion of the rule of the chapter six, fire and our outside attorney. Hi, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Maggie Mooney. I am an attorney with the law firm of Person Cohen Mooney Fernandez at Jackson. Our firm specializes in local government law. We represent everything from a numerous number of CDDs, approximately thirty-five at last count, to fire districts, to drainage districts, to other improvement districts, to inland navigation districts, to port authorities, airport authorities, basically whatever Florida law provides for in terms of a special purpose government, we represent. We also serve as counsel to several cities and special counsel to some counties in terms of rendering opinions when necessary and when called upon to do so. I received a call about two weeks ago from your district manager, Ms. O'Reilly, asking whether my firm would submit a quote for an opinion letter relating to rulemaking. And it was, it actually came through the Florida Association of Special Districts and they said, "The question is all about rulemaking. The question's all about rulemaking." They said, "Well, we can answer some questions about rulemaking." When we spoke to Ms. O'Reilly and actually found out more information about the question that was being posed, what we really kind of drilled down into is that this is really a question about, in our opinion, special assessments. Special assessments are non-ad valorem assessments. The words are synonymous when we're talking in terms of the law. Special assessment law, you know, is not particular to CDDs in chapter 190. Special assessment laws really run the gamut across all local government, along, excuse me, across all local government entities in that the ground rules that apply to the CDD also applies to cities, also applies to counties, also applies to fire districts, and every other amalgamation of a special district, a special purpose district as well. So we tried to write an opinion that kind of gave some framework as to both the question that was being posed as well as the law as applied to special assessments. And while I know that the question came in terms of can we amend rules, you know, chapter six, which has a methodology of sorts in terms of how you determine your, and apportion your assessments among benefiting properties within the district. The issue that we see really is, is not whether or not you can change a rule. The answer is yes, you can always change a rule. The issue is whether or not the rule really is the governing body, rulemaking is really the governing body of law in terms of how you change assessments. And I'm trying to make that as clear as possible, meaning that the way you can always change and modify your assessment methodology. Florida law provided for that back in nineteen eighty-five when this district was created in its charter. The method by which you adopt an assessment methodology is set forth in chapter 170 of the Florida statutes. That is the way you determine and apportion benefits and give the public notice that they're going to be subject to an assessment. And that is the way that exists today if you are going to modify the process by which you are changing the apportionment of assessments amongst benefiting properties. For that reason, we have put in a recommendation into this opinion letter relative to the fact that if, you know, answering the questions that we were specifically posed, and I'm just gonna run through it real quickly, I know, but the opinion letter has already been distributed to you, and is, and you know, the first one has to do with the two thousand five adoption, and whether the rulemaking process was the appropriate way to adopt an assessment methodology. In our opinion, the appropriate process is set forth in chapter 170, not in rulemaking, to adopt an assessment methodology. The validity of the two thousand five adoption, once again, it is currently valid. You don't have a court order that says it is not, therefore it is currently valid. You've imposed it. It's been placed on people's tax bills for twenty years. It is still valid until otherwise challenged in a court of law and until a court rules otherwise. The ability to amend the previously adopted methodology, yes. At any point in time, you can modify a methodology on apportionments of benefits and reallocate how you assess benefiting properties. Again, chapter 170 of the Florida statutes lays out a very specific process that includes notices, includes public hearings, includes passage of a resolution, and it also contemplates that your engineer or another consultant is gonna come before this board and explain to you, you know, how they arrived at this allocation of benefits, how it, you know, what they are, they will assist you in devising something that is based upon some criteria that the expert, that in their expertise, they have arrived at, that appropriates benefits amongst the different classes and categories of properties you have in your community. So, you know, with that said, you know, you have this rule that is not the 170 process, and I don't, you know, it reads to us from reviewing the two thousand five, two thousand seven minutes that the rulemaking was done in part to just inform the public so that they always had a way to kind of find, "How did we get here?" And so, you know, if that's the purpose of the rulemaking, there's nothing that prohibits you all from continuing to publish and to have a rule, but I just wanna make sure that everybody understands it's kind of secondary. It's a secondary means, not the primary way of establishing your assessment. It's there for information, so it's not, it's not gonna be, it shouldn't be your primary source, in our opinion. So that's where we get to the recommended approach for future modifications, if that's the direction that this board is going in, that to the extent the board is evaluating a change in methodology, a change in methodologies, our recommendation is that the board utilize the chapter 170 process and initiate that and have an appropriate consultant, engineer, come in and, you know, follow all the steps, have the public hearings, give the required notice, adopt the necessary resolutions, and then if you wanna run a rulemaking process in tandem or right behind it, behind that process, you know, so that you can continue the, I'll call it the belt and suspenders kind of approach to having a published document that shows how we got here for the public, that that would be, you know, our recommended path forward. I kind of wanted to give a ten thousand foot view. I know you guys have the long, I'm trying to think, the six or seven page opinion. I'm happy to field questions or drill down into any of these points. I was just trying to give a high level overview of our opinion and, you know, again, happy, appreciate the opportunity to perform the service for you all and appear here this afternoon before the rains start.
Thank you. Chelsea, do you have, so I'll open up for questions, but I wanna make sure it was Bobby who emailed you questions. Did he have any questions?
I sent the email to all of the board members. I didn't, the only questions I received were from Mr. Tinkle in writing and Carol earlier today.
Okay.
But I did not receive any from Bob.
And you got my email that I forwarded you, the questions?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'll start with Carol. Do you have any questions for her, specifically in any of those?
I do. Going back to former times in my life, I was on a county board in another state. And so, the buzzwords for county government at that point was health, safety, and welfare. If it dealt with health, safety, and welfare, it was a county issue and could be addressed and could be taxed or whatever, whatever. Moving forward for us then, what are our, for lack of a better term, buzzwords or criteria or the thing that we hang our hat on as far as this provides what that we can tax for?
Okay. So as a CDD, a community development district, Florida statutes has provided for all the types of infrastructures that you are, that are within your purview. Your scope of work is not as large as a county, which is a general purpose government, from your past experience. You are a special purpose government, so your focus has to be narrowed to a field that only includes what the legislature said you could. And in that, we go back to your charter, which is the eighty-five document, I have it here, Laws of Florida, that created the Gateway District. It was chapter forty-two F dash one, from the Florida Land and Water Adjudicatory Commission, and they gave you all the powers of 190 at the time, back in nineteen eighty-five. And those include all of, you know, the roads and the streets and the parks and the, you know, the infrastructure that you support, your administration, your, whatever 190 says that you are allowed to fund and continue to support, that's your public purpose. That's your health, safety, and welfare. And as long as there is an infrastructure that falls within chapter 190 of the Florida statutes, you are allowed within, you're allowed to fund it, support it, maintain it, replace it, remove it, rebuild it. You are allowed to commission funds to, for that purpose. Now, you can't go and, let me give an example of what you can't do. You know, so in a general purpose government, county, cities, you have the power of land use, they have the power of police powers. You don't have those. Those are, you know, those are restricted, so we have to operate within the field of the focus of chapter 190, and as so long as Florida statutes 190, you know, has a box for it, for that type of infrastructure, you can spend money on it.
Okay, so a word that I have heard mentioned is benefit, that it, you can tax it if it provides a benefit in the infrastructure thing. So if this particular sidewalk will provide a benefit, then you can tax the property for that benefit. How do you define that, is it that benefit just to that property, or is it benefit to Gateway, period?
So, so.
Help me focus on and understand benefit.
Sure.
As it applies to what we're doing here.
So I'm going to use a different term than tax, 'cause tax and assessment have two different meanings in Florida law.
Okay.
Tax is ad valorem, value-based, general purpose. It's what you were probably doing back as a county commissioner. It's millage, and it's, and it's uniform.
Correct.
Okay. Special assessments, non-ad valorem assessments, they're the same concept, is where you find this construct of benefit and apportionment, okay? And that's what you guys have. You have the powers of special assessments, and so that's why benefit starts coming into play.
Okay.
The way the law has interpreted benefit, it means that there has to be some realized gain, whether it's value or safety, or whether it's, it has to be a value to the upland property, to the real property, the real property owner who owns within the community, okay? So if I own property, real, free, be simple, and I have a residential home, and I have the opportunity to walk on that sidewalk, whether it's in front of my property, or it's two blocks away, or if it's a mile away, you know, it's part of a sidewalk system, presumably there is a, there could be a benefit to my property. Same goes for the roads, same goes for the landscaping, same goes for the park that is nearby. If I have access to all these, this infrastructure and amenities, my property, my property value is enhanced, I am benefited by that infrastructure that exists and I have access to. Does that, does that answer the question?
So it doesn't have to be specifically on your property if.
Correct. It doesn't have to be. It could be, but it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
So, so yes. And again, that's why you hire, that's why a government hires an independent consultant, an engineer, an economist, to determine, you know, how should we allocate benefits? I, I'm gonna give you another example, 'cause perhaps this will also kind of help, kinda show that you can, that there could be a small segment that receives particular benefit, and then there could be a larger class of benefit. Where I serve as a city attorney for the town along Bokee. It's a, it's a beautiful island, a little bit north of here, and they have, they're evaluating a special assessment methodology for canal drainage, or canal access, excuse me, not drainage, but canal access. And one of the things they're evaluating is, okay, you know, if you think of canals, like roadways.
Okay.
And you have your street, that your block that you're on, or your canal that your home butts up to, you know, there may be a scenario where the only people who ever come down that little swath of canals are those who reside on that canal.
Right.
Whereas there is a whole channel system into the community, into the subdivision beyond that, that is utilized by many within the community. So one way that they're evaluating benefits is, okay, there is a base benefit for everybody who utilizes this navigable waterway, kind of the main road, if you will, the main canal. And then there is a more particularized benefit to those who are kind of on individual side canals.
Okay.
And so it's almost like a tiered, multi-layered assessment, which you can do as well. So it just all.
So you could say, "The only people that are ever gonna use your little segment are these ten people."
Yes.
So, and so in your rule of benefits, you could just charge those ten people with that and not everybody else?
Yes. Again, as long.
Or the board could decide that, who knows? The boat may stray and we're going to do it for everybody, because at some point, somebody might go down that little.
Exactly correct.
That little segment.
Exactly correct. Well, you know, and you're hitting the nail on the head. You could, you could structure it as a tiered assessment, where there's a base plus an enhancement based on what's particular to your property, or you could look at it all as a whole and say, "No, this is part of a larger subdivision in which we are going to do canal maintenance for everybody in this entire subdivision, and so we're gonna, you know, we're not gonna take the nuances down these side, you know, side canals, these side streets, and everybody's, we're just gonna allocate the assessment across the board to a larger pool." But all of those kind of determinations in terms of how you arrive at a calculated formula for appropriating benefit is really based on the expert that comes and stands before you and evaluates it and says, "Well, you know, what is the capital expense? And how do we, what do we think is fair? What do we think is fair amongst the benefiting properties? How are we going to determine who is benefited? And is, are some benefited more than others? What about for those who don't even have a dock and don't have a boat? Do they even care? Well, is there, or is there a value that is inherent in their property if you have navigable access?" So I give you that example just because that's one of the things that I happen to be working on separately, and I think the answer, and the answer is, whatever your consultant says and can back up, you know, in support with their professional opinion, and is, and you adopt, is given a great deal of deference in a court system under assessment law. Because once we have, as long as it is reasonable, as long as it is rational, as long as it is not arbitrary, and it's not like we're just making things up.
Right.
To reallocate it, you know, there's somebody, there's somebody who's telling you, "This is the way you should do it. It is the most fair. It is the most reasonable, and here's my, here's my basis for it. Here's my justification."
Okay, and then if the board were to decide that, and I'll quote a phrase that's been used, "We're all one district." And so if, then in essence, you would create one big pot, right? And these people would be assessed their part of the pot, and the other people would be assessed their part of the pot. So right now, we have two different budget subcategories, one for general and one for Pelican Preserve, which is a separate issue. So if the Pelican Preserve people, which are about one-third of the whole area, the Pelican Preserve people are now going to be asked to pay one-third of the whole, of everything, doesn't that mean that the other people are gonna pay two-thirds of what Pelican was now paying? Because you're combining the two budgets, the O-one and the O-two, into one big pot, right?
Conceivably, you know, everybody's paying a proportionate share of the operations of the hole, so, so yes, you're just reallocating, you know, instead of like a tiered approach, you're just putting it all into one budget and then applying some method to the individual subcategories, the subdivisions, the communities Pelican Point and the other communities as well. So yes, that would.
Okay.
That could be done. Again.
Okay.
I keep emphasizing this, with an engineer who's coming in.
I know.
And saying that they agree that that is a.
Well, we would always do an engineer because I don't understand it.
Yeah.
And I couldn't even tell you how you got there, so.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, you wanna go next, or you want Ed to?
Why don't you let Ed go?
I'll go last.
Let me go. This may take a while. I apologize in advance for being a smart ass. Did you read chapter six?
I did.
Then you know that what she just told you wasn't true. It's divided. That's what this is all about. Were you given a set of the questions that we ask, that I specifically ask?
I was forwarded a question, a set of questions that you asked after I had read the opinion.
None of them were answered.
Well, if you'd like to ask them to me now, I'm happy to answer them.
I certainly would, thank you. Is, do you see a difference between maintenance and capital assessments?
Maintenance and capital? No, 'cause it's all.
As relates to CDDs.
What is, no. I mean, one is your, not, I don't know how you guys, you guys allocate it.
Have you, have you read 190?
I have.
Okay. What do you think 190-021 says?
021, I believe, I looked at it based on your email, is the section that talks about special assessments.
And non-ad valorem assessments.
Yes.
And maintenance assessments and capital assessments.
Yes.
As I read it, I'm an engineer, not an attorney.
Okay.
But I've done both for about forty years. I read that a CDD has all the authority, which you pointed out, which we've known forever, that a CDD can make rules. But if you're gonna make rules that have to do with assessments and non-ad valorem assessments, you err on 190-021, paragraph two, if it's capital, paragraph three, if it's maintenance, which purely indicate that you can have, and that's where also benefits. In fact, it's one of the only places under 190 where benefits are talked about. Benefits are talked about there in terms of capital, where it even allows a part of a district to be separated out on the basis of capital benefits. On the other hand, 190-021, paragraph three, and this is what we were wanting you to opine on, is it's on maintenance. It does not allow nor call for a separating of the district in maintenance costs. That's what we were asking you to do. Chapter six, chapter six made it perfectly clear that this district was set, separated apart. There was no reference in any of the documents in the preparation or any of the fourteen months of discussions in the preparation of chapter six. No discussion whatsoever of 190-021, which is the foundation of how you create a rule if you're going to do assessments, if it's assessment for maintenance, or if it's assessment for capital, or if it's assessment possibly for both. They didn't do that. What we were asking you is what's your opinion, not only in the validity, I understand the validity, as Valindell Judge says otherwise. I wanna know in your legal opinion, was it legal in that it did not agree with chapter 190-021, paragraph two?
Specifically.
And paragraph three.
Specifically related to maintenance.
Specifically, well.
Capital.
Chapter six, I think we can all set and agree, it doesn't, you even use the term capital. So it must be for maintenance, and in fact, it defines operation and maintenance costs associated with specialized amenities. That's how we got this delineation, separation. What I wanted to hear from you is, is that when it was done twenty years ago, was it done legally? That's a very simple question. Was it legal and was it in accordance with 190-021, paragraph two or paragraph three? You didn't even use the term 190-021 in your paperwork.
I used chapter 190 several times.
And I don't understand that. So my question is, was it legal in accordance with 190-021, paragraph three, twenty years ago?
So you, there was a lot to unpack in what you just said, and I don't agree with all of your statements, but I will answer the question as posed. And the question is, as I understand it, is was it done correctly back in '05 and '06 and '07? And in my opinion, the chapter 170 process is the process that should be followed, not rulemaking.
What's 190-021 mean then?
I don't think you are reading it correctly, sir.
I didn't ask that question. I said, "What does it mean?"
190-021 means whenever you have a non-ad valorem assessment, you are to be going through the 170 process. Rulemaking is, is, is a form of imposing a user fee in our, my turn? Thank you.
Yeah.
Rulemaking is typically used, in most other CDDs, for imposing user fees. User fees are those which the individual has a, it's different than a special assessment, okay? A user fee is, "I'm receiving an individual benefit and therefore I pay my fair share." So it is still a fair share discussion, but you see user fees on permits, you see user fees on key cards, on.
I understand all that, but the issue is.
On rental fees. Those are user fees. And that's where we see rulemaking typically. We don't typically see it in a non-ad valorem assessment type of allocation because non-ad valorem assessments, again, which is the question I was answering, are dictated through chapter 170, which is bootstrapped by chapter 190 and cross-referenced in there, as it was back in eighty-five, as it is to this day.
So your position is, for CDDs operating under 190 and rulemaking and doing a non-ad valorem tax special assessment, which is what we're doing. That's what we did. It's exactly what we did. It's been a tax, a non-ad valorem tax for twenty years.
There's no such thing as a non-ad valorem tax. A tax is separate than an assessment.
Non-ad valorem assessment. The issue is, that's what we have done for twenty years, and it specifically, it specifically delineated an area in a community. And it specifically, it specifically delineated an area in a community which is contradictory to 190-021. But you're saying 190-021 is absolutely not applicable in this particular case.
I did not say that. I said I do not interpret it the way you're interpreting. I interpret 190 to, to provide for special assessments to be imposed following the process of chapter 170. I cannot repeat it any more clearer than that.
Let's go on. Second question was that we had asked that, two years after the rule was done, our attorney opined to the board indicating that the secling out and separating of operation maintenance costs for areas, operation maintenance, not capital, could not, would not, should not be done. We're of the opinion that that was correct. We think that what that was, was a, call it a mid-course correction, call it whatever you want. It was an advice to the board at that time, the board, their attorney and their management company, that you cannot separately exempt an area on O and M. Now, I did say capital, which goes along with 190-021, paragraph two. My question was, what was your opinion on that?
Again, I did not see any course correction utilizing the chapter 170 and 197 process, which is the way that you modify a, an assessment methodology.
No, that's not what I asked.
Under Florida law and under chapter 190.
I, I, I don't know how to say it any clearer. That's not what I asked. You saw what the attorney opined on, which implies that the rule was being done wrongly. What's your opinion on that?
Attorneys give opinions and minutes get.
You, so you, you didn't see anything wrong with his deal whatsoever?
In, so, again, there was not board action taken at that time. What's, you did not.
I think when the, when, when the attorney tells, tells us that we're not following sunshine, I don't know that there has to take a board vote on it. It's, it's what his opinion was. I'm just asking you, do you agree with that opinion?
Hey, Ed, can I? Can I ask a question, because I think it will provide clarity?
On the question?
On the question. If I'm hearing Ed correctly, and from my understanding, does 190-021 specify O and M and the inability to parse that out, to exempt certain areas within a community?
No, again, the, the way you can parse out communities, the ways you can exempt communities, the way you can adjust your methodology is all through the 170 process, okay? Regardless of whether it's O and M or whether it's capital, you know, assessment law is assessment law.
And 170 is defined by the governing body in that process, or the process.
170, what do you mean by, is, 170 is defined by the governing body?
The, the, the rules or the policy or guidelines is, is determined by 170.
It's determined by the, the professionals, so the engineering.
Correct, through the 170 process.
Correct.
Yeah, right, so that's where you determine.
I think in summary, what I understood is that we utilize a rulemaking when we did this decision in two thousand and five, instead of following chapter 170. Nobody has challenged it and it stays as it is. Now we're aware of it, now we move forward. And if we're going to move forward, forget 190 for now, follow the steps of 170, because that's what you didn't follow in two thousand and five and then go forward. You can either amend, you can either repeal. Whatever you do, follow 170. That's the short answer that I got, because I very.
I couldn't have said it better myself. Yes, that is it. That is correct.
I have questions.
I have another one about, I'll let it go to the very last.
Okay. So just in defining the benefit, I guess there is, and you were able to explain both. And I don't think necessarily one of them would apply at this moment for our district. But there is a benefit of the owner, and then there's a benefit of the lot, right? Because we don't talk about that. So, a lot of the emails that I received, it was, I don't utilize the soccer field. I don't disagree, but there is a benefit to the lot. So there is that educational part that I would like for them to have, because there's a value to their property that is added. So it's in addition, it's not, you have a benefit, now you choose to utilize it or not, that does not take part in the decision that we make, and that's what is the most important thing for me. I don't disagree that they may not utilize it, but it's, it's either a choice or it's an ability to, but there is a value and there is a benefit because the lot benefits from. And I think that's the biggest message from all the emails that I've been reading it, is there is a benefit to the lot, because it's improvement or not. You choosing to utilize or not, then that's, that's totally a feeling, that's totally something else that does not really come to us. Am I right?
You have articulated that very well. Yes, you are, the, the benefit is derived to the lot because whether the current lot owner lives there, a subsequent lot owner might decide to use that. You know, whether the current lot owner uses the soccer field fields or not, it's available. The subsequent purchaser of that lot might you, might come to the community because of the soccer fields, because they do intend to use it. So it's the, it's, it's the access, it's the amenities that, that run with it. And when you think about it, it is all property specific, it's property benefit, because the whole idea is that these non-advalorem assessments attached to your tax bill, they run with the land, they run with the lot. If you don't pay your tax bill, you know, it, it can be, your, your property can be foreclosed on, so it is the property that, that is, that it is attaching to, not the individual.
All right, and then finally, would it be fair to say that we are one district with two different assesses, assessment methodologies? Because we are one district with two different assessing methodologies. Would that be a correct statement?
It, it, it reads somewhat that way, I would say, yes. It reads like there is definitely two structures.
Two structures, but under one district. Okay, that's it, I don't have.
You are one district, oh, yes.
Keep it back to Ed.
Well, let me ask a couple, because it falls right in with some of your questions. And just to be clear, so we, we have it kind of on the, on the record for us. We've talked about what defines benefit, but can you just clarify who defines benefit?
Yes, it would be a consultant, a consultant or an engineer, a professional who, who makes a recommendation to this board. Once they make the recommendation to this board, based on their professional opinion and expertise, this board would adopt it through the course of a resolution in the 170 process, which then makes it yours.
Correct.
It then makes it this board's and this district's.
And then can you also just make sure we're clear on what falls within benefit? Even if it's general, I just wanna make sure we have some parameters.
So, it could be a number of, it, it, it all depends on the criteria that's being evaluated. It could be value, that there's, you know, an inherent increase in value from the amenities that are available. It could be a safety function, there's safety, you know, if you have sidewalks that are supported, because that way people can use them for ingress and egress and safety reasons, the roads, same thing. There could be an aesthetic benefit, you know, aesthetic.
So you mentioned like landscaping roads.
Right, it, it could be all of those. It could be multifaceted, you know, there could be, you know, multi tiers of benefits. Again, those are just a couple that come from.
Is there anything that falls outside of that?
Again, that, that would fall outside of a benefit. You know, again, things that are outside of the CDD's purview. I mean, you know, like that are outside your scope of 190.
So it's kinda like, everything is a benefit if there is one.
If, if it's defined that way, yeah.
And it's defined by the professionals, yeah.
Does connectivity have any bearing on benefit or consideration?
It could, it, it, it could. It absolutely could. I mean, you know, availability of the amenity to a community, yes, it could.
Okay. And when we discuss a benefit, we're talking about properties that fall within the community zone, or the city zone, or the county zone, correct? Like there is a line, and you define benefit as it pertains to who sits within that boundary.
Correct.
Yep, okay. If I'm reading, if I read your, your statement findings correctly, it seems that there is a recommendation, well, this is pretty clear, recommendation to identify or update the, update through the 170, right? But I think there was also a recommendation to, as you're doing that, to also understand the impact that the assessment may or may not have within the community through assessment. Did I understand that correctly? Like, you, you don't need the impact to go through the 170 process, or in our case, to determine whether chapter six should be repealed or not. You don't need impact, but it is your recommendation that impact is considered along with the updating of the, or creating the, the process?
Impact, I don't know if I used the word impact. Did I use impact? I might have.
But we're talking about the, the assessment, potential assessment impact to.
To, to individual property owners? So, so that, I, I think, you know, how it, okay, yes. So how it affects individual lot owners and the allocation to them is something that, that you end up having a hearing on in the 170 process. And in the 170 process, people can come to you and say, I agree, I disagree, I, you know, and, and raise all of, probably, it sounds like a lot of the arguments you are already hearing about, you know, whether the allocation is fair and reasonable and it's portioned right.
But it would be your recommendation for us to have that along with the professional expert study.
Yes.
In conjunction with the 170 process, that would be.
Well, that is a process. The 170 process calls out for that. If you wanna do it, you have to have that.
Yes.
And then, and then after that, then we can do the rulemaking, which is for information purposes only. It's like FII, this is what we did.
That's the 120, yeah.
And that's the only document that we have now.
The 120, right.
The, the, chapter six, the rulemaking. So we'll, we'll go ahead and follow, if we choose to either amend or repeal utilizing 170, and we can do it side by side with then adopting the rule or immediately after.
Okay.
This, this somewhat creates a problem.
Come on, so let's just.
Four years ago, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm hearing some stuff here I didn't think you would really say today. We hired a very good assessment methodology firm four years ago. One of the best in the state. One of the best, works closely with the man who authored chapter 190. Our assessment methodology doesn't mention 170. Not one iota. It says it's done in accordance with 190. Now, if you're gonna say, well, 190 refers to 170, don't play games with me. Don't play games. Let me go back to the real question I left to the end. When I got your deal, I was immensely upset. Talked to Chelsea. Chelsea passed on to me something very interesting. If you opined on everything, you could put us in a litigation position. What did you mean?
I mean, I'm not typically in the, in, placed in a position where I write roadmaps on how to sue a government.
I'm sorry?
On how to expose a government to a lawsuit. And so I don't write.
I think maybe that's a side question, if you wanna ask her, then maybe you can take it aside and have that conversation with her. I think that's what she's saying to you.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Maybe you can have, maybe you can have a side conversation with her, so we.
No, I think this needs to be brought out in the public. She told Chelsea that if she opined in a certain way on a certain subject, she could put us in a litigation mode. And my deal is, there's only one way I can know that that can happen. You would say something that had, had been done in the previous, or we were about to do, that was illegal. Otherwise, how could we have a litigation mode?
It's very clear.
I think we need an answer to that question.
I'll let her answer that, but let me just go back to the, the summary that I gave you my first, the first time I spoke. We have a rule, regardless of how we think, nobody has challenges yet. Was the process followed correctly?
Yeah, that's what, what I'm asking.
The answer is no, because the, the, what we needed, it's 170 was not followed. We follow rulemaking. So that's, that's the question that you want her to answer, I'm answering to you.
If, if that's what you're referring to, and, and just say that, I'm, I'm happy with that. If the fact that we did not follow 170 in creating that rule was what your fear is of putting in writing, I'm fine with that answer. I'm fine with that answer. I thought it was something far more nefarious than that. But if that is what you're saying, that you're concerned about the fact that 170 was not followed either in two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, or two thousand and twenty, we got some real issues, some real, real issues. Because the consultant we're working with, I know him well. I can't believe he didn't say, guys, this isn't in accordance with the book, by the book. I just, and now that when we go to him, it's going to be very.
Two thousand and five, we weren't here.
I'm sorry?
We weren't here in two thousand and five.
No, two thousand and twenty.
Two thousand.
When we did, when we did the rule.
So, at this point, we recognize there is, my, my main focus wants to stay with. We recognize there is, there is a potential issue. We know what we need to do to correct it.
Yeah.
Or to leave it as it is and wait until somebody challenges us that. Let me finish that.
Good.
So either we stay as it is and wait until somebody challenges. We recognize there's an issue, we then now make the decision after, and only after 170 is followed, when we have the information from the professors and say, look, there is either a benefit that is equal to all, you have to choose to do so, or there is a benefit which most likely what they're inclined to is specific and in tearing it up. And then at that time, when he give us like, this is what I recommend, we make that decision, but only then. So those are really our three options. We know where we stand now, regardless of how it was done then. The rule was not followed, period. They follow a different rule, not what was required. But if you're going to choose it, to take either the two options, which either amend or repeal, we must follow the rule. If you choose to do nothing, that's fine. But until the day that we get challenged by a judge and seeing that that's not done right, then we're still gonna have to do it and then follow those processes. Have you had another question?
I don't.
No? Kelly?
I do not have another question of Maggie. I do not believe that a board member here should be putting words in Maggie's mouth and.
I didn't.
Oh, yes, you did.
I got it from our district manager. I'm sorry, if you were on the phone, I can understand you saying that maybe. But you weren't on the phone with the district manager and myself, was she on the phone? And you told me, you told me exactly, that she told you, if she opined in a certain manner in answering a question, that we could be put into a litigation position. That's what you told me.
Not verbatim, but in a round.
That was the gist.
Yes.
Now, you wanna say that again?
I certainly do.
Okay, so on that, on that note.
Because we are talking with Maggie right now, we are not talking with Chelsea right now, Ed. I think what I got from your report was, was past is past, let's move forward. And when you move forward, you use chapter 170. Am I correct in that?
That is correct.
I mean, I'm just going to what you read here.
That is correct.
So, put you, put all your questions about was this legal or that legal, or don't try and put words in anybody's mouth. Let's just as a board move forward. And she has given us a roadmap to do it, chapter 170.
So the question I have now is regarding the public hearing. Because by the public hearing, which is set for the nineteenth, we are not gonna have any of the items, if any, that are required on 70. Do we continue with the public hearing for purposes of question only and make no decision at that time? Because we would have to then wait until at least February or March for when the methodology is, that's, we only talked about Russ giving us the information. We haven't talked about with Steven, I mean, with Tetra Tech, or whoever we decide to do the engineering part of it, because it's gonna require that too. So we don't know if we're gonna have that, I mean, we know we're not gonna have that by the nineteenth, so.
No, but we have to repeal the rule to do the rule right. We have to repeal it. We, it wasn't done right. We've just said that. We've gotta do it, repeal the rule, then do a new assessment methodology in accordance with 170. It's the only answer.
Tony, is that, is that accurate? Can we, can we work on following the 170 process in preparation for the public hearing on, let's say, January second or sixteenth, which would allow us to have impact and all the components that we need through 170, without having to repeal what's existing?
I believe the board could, if it wishes to, when it gets into public session, in particular on the nineteenth, they could table consideration of repealing the rule till such time as you have the assessment methodology in a form that you wanna go through the notice and advertising process that Maggie mentioned, which was done in 2020. There's resolutions that reference 170, notices were in the newspaper, notices were mailed out. When we went through that whole process with Russ back then, I've got the three resolutions that were filed back then. And then the people were also notified when they got their individual letters at the time of the budget and assessment adoption hearing. When it was finally levied and imposed, it referenced again that methodology report that had been approved earlier. So, anyway, it, it, yes.
Let me ask.
In my opinion, the board could decide if they wish to, to either go forward with the repeal and continue on the path of having Russ and the engineer, which the engineer did do a report back in 2020 also. and continue on the path of having Russ and the engineer, which the engineer did do a report back in 2020 also, follow that process for the 170 process. They could either repeal it, go on with the 170 process or table the consideration of the repeal of the rule, and then go forward with the 170 process.
Because, one more second. So, if we're saying that 170 is a process we should follow, what we have existing did not follow that process, so, you know, it's going to be, it don't need to be repealed regardless. Now, what we do in 170 could show benefit to the said area or not, yet to be determined through the process, correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
So, the, I think what Carol, you and Bob and most people in Pelican were looking for is, is to understand the impact in parallel with making a decision on whether to repeal or not. I think that's what I kind of heard from, you know.
Well, that's the course we're on now, though.
But wouldn't that be a secondary thing?
Well, it's completely independent, but it is part of the, it's part of the process, but we can make a decision without...
Main thing is that there are benefits, and we're only going to know that answer after we...
Right, right. But what Ed is trying to say is, and what I was trying to understand from Tony is, is the proper next step to repeal, because we're going to have to go through 170. It could be favorable to benefit, it could not. Like, we don't know that yet. But either way, we're going to refresh it, we're going to follow the right process. When I came in today, I was, by reading and trying to prepare, I was already under the assumption that we would not be ready for the public hearing, that we would have to push it out. In the timeline, in my opinion, really, the clock doesn't start ticking to our negative until like January, right, because we need to start for budgeting process, January, February, right.
By March, in the March.
And...
You see, that's the other thing.
I think back in March was when Laura told us that we need to start our budgeting process.
Right, that's why, and Russ said, initial estimates, based on what we told him, that he can have initial estimates by January. So I put a stake in the ground in January for us to have the impact, and that's where we need to make a decision. Prior to your information, that's when we need to make a decision whether we were going to repeal or not. So for me, the stake in the ground was January. So I wasn't as much concerned with having to push for the repeal in the public hearing coming up in September. But I think we need to maybe determine whether or not it's the right process to repeal in September. Or just say, look, we're going to have everything we need, hopefully by January, we can leave it in place, it's really a moot point.
Russ has to take...
I have one very important question. I know you would appreciate this on a side question, not here. If we choose now to repeal it, will somewhat close that door for a possible litigation? The sooner we repeal it, right? So there's a benefit, that's what I'm...
And if that's, hold on, Tony, is that a question that we could potentially ask and close door, or?
No, there's no pending litigation.
No, it has to be pinned, okay, great, sorry to interrupt.
So, your attorney just advised that there was a 170 hearing in 2020, that that information wasn't provided to me. So, that's new information, which could, you know, tip the scales, you know, and change an evaluation in terms of any potential exposure. And so I think that that's something that would be...
Tony, are you talking about the CERC?
No, no, back in, back in 2019, 2019, 2020, the board decided the old methodology that was being utilized was the original water management benefit and tax analysis, going back to an old statutory language from '86, '87, '88. And the board said, that's no longer, we don't believe it's appropriate, because it's not just a water management operation by the district. So that's when the board retained Russ to do a complete new methodology, assessment methodology, there was an engineer's report. Now, the question is, that chapter six is not mentioned in that assessment methodology report. And I'm not sure if Russ was aware of chapter six at the time he did his assessment methodology.
That is exactly the problem.
Yeah.
The issue is, is that that chapter six, when Russ was doing the report, whether you like the fact that the assessment methodology does not mention the term "chapter six", it mentions the actions that were required by chapter six. And those actions were the connectivity. They specifically mentioned the connectivity.
It does reference Pelican Preserve, Arborwood, and Worthington, making determinations.
And it's all three of those that are subject to connectivity. That's why I am absolutely 100% positive. The rule has to be repealed to allow our consultants to go on and recreate this mess. But right now, we have a rule, an assessment methodology, that was created in 2020 that took the concept of connectivity and carried it forward. That's why we have two sets of payments and accounts in Gateway. If he would have not done that, we would have just had one account.
And just for a point of clarity, the first step is to determine benefit. The second step is to define impact or the percentage through the assessment methodology. And I think that's really important, especially for Pelican, because the, this would be, let's say, a three-step process. One is to repeal chapter six, which will allow us to update, modify 170, which would, through that process, we identify benefit. And then the third piece is to, is to calculate or identify the percentage or the impact, right? So there's three components of it. Does that make sense?
Well, part of the methodology is...
You have to follow those three items, yeah.
We determine what the benefit is, and then we determine what percentage of that benefit, how it will be assessed.
But we don't necessarily determine, it's going to come to us that way.
Yeah, yeah, but what I mean is, it's two separate processes.
The benefit has to be determined first.
Yeah.
Then you do the how, the how much, that's how you do it.
Does that make sense? Because I think that's really important for Pelican, because the benefit, it could be more, it could be less. If benefit is...
It could be a bit of on the end, that we are being more, that's paying less. And you asked that question in a previous meeting, and I have meetings with Pelican people, and that's what it is. It is going to be fair. If that's what it is at the end of the day, when we are provided that information, then that's what's going to be. If we're asking for fair, we're going to ask for it. And the side question is, my biggest thing from today is...
However, Maggie did say that connectivity could, 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 could be a factor.
Sure.
Could be used as a factor.
Absolutely.
So, at that point, then you don't necessarily need rule six.
You're going to get an amendment, or you're not going to have any, you're going to need a ruling.
But it's only when you follow 170 and have the expert tell you what the factors are, that we will get there. So, in my opinion, I believe Ed is trying to put the cart before the horse. And that we should just move forward now with 170, the process 170, and forget all the other stuff and just move forward.
I don't know if I agree with that.
You need to repeal, you need to repeal it first and then you follow that process. And then again, we have to look at it both sides. Interconnectivity is one, and it could. There's a benefit to the lot, right? There is the ability, we have a role there, there is an ability and that could be open and that interconnectivity will no longer be an issue. So there's a lot of moving parts with it. So Pelican Preserve, it's my biggest thing, when I sat with everybody, when I read the emails, it's like, we don't utilize the soccer field, we don't utilize this. There's a benefit to the lot, that is equal, no, in the opinion of the attorney, that is equal value to the benefit of the owner. If the owner utilizes, chooses to do so, it's up to him. But there is a benefit because the lot, there's an increase in value of the lot because you have the ability to use those services. That was my, that was my third question I asked. Right?
Do you want to have her recap, just her recommendation? Do you want to have her recap her recommendation and then we'll wrap it up?
Sure. So, once again, I think, I think that the point has been made, which is that whatever you all do in terms of reevaluating your assessment structure, that you should do it in conformance with 170 and 190. Those processes have an expert bring forward a methodology, present it, adopt it, assuming you agree with it, adopt it in the format that 170 calls for with the appropriate resolutions, public hearings, et cetera. To the extent you want to keep the rule out there, or a rule out there, it is, you know, almost belt and, it's a belt and suspenders kind of thing. It's not going to be your driving factor. Your 170 process should be the driving factor on how you impose assessments. And so, having rulemaking is just informational for the public. To the extent that they go into their rulebooks, it's there for the reading. So, how you choose to, you know, manage that, you know, I think the best process if you're going to replace it with something else, then clearly it has to come on the backside of the 170 process. You could just repeal it, especially if you have properly adopted a 170 process in the past. That information was not provided to me for review, so if you did it, that's great. That's great. That gives me great comfort.
And just again, for our Pelican folks, the defining the benefit will be handled through our experts. It's, the benefit will be defined by our experts.
Yes.
Yeah, they're going to be the ones who are going to make the recommendations.
It's not me, it's not you, we will have expert input on that.
Yeah, and I would be, at this point, I would be opposed to utilizing even the method that we did for 2020 because I know that was an engineering report done in 2020.
It don't need to be new.
I think we just...
Yeah, no, it all needs to be fresh and new.
And there will be no questions, and let's be transparent as we can be, thank you for having 1020, what needs to be done now.
Correct.
As a bundle, you know, because things have changed from four years ago. Could have, or not, I don't know.
It's just pertinent to start fresh.
All right, no other questions, to Maggie, no?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and then we'll...